Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of November 20th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, welcome. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item is submission of minutes of previous meetings, Items A1 and A2.
Motion to approve submission of previous minutes?
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Item B2, and this is an advertised public hearing to consider the renewal of the intoxicating beverage licenses for 2019-2020.
So this is a public hearing. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? I can hear Councilman Perella. It's actually, it's B1 and B2 are a little backwards here. The clerk just pointed out to me prior to the meeting that we actually have to do it this way because of we're creating and then considering the fact of actually adding one. So that's why it's B1 and B2 backwards. So, is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. What's this council's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve BV intoxicating beverage license for Beehive Cafe.
No, no. Renewals.
Oh, sorry, renewals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the advertised public hearing, considering the application of Jennifer Cavallaro doing business as the Beehive Cafe, 10 Franklin Street. This is a request for a Class BV intoxicating beverage license. Essentially, it's an upgrade of the license. The licensee currently has a Class BV limited that the council just renewed.
So again, this is a public hearing. As the clerk rightly pointed out, the applicant is currently a liquor license holder, which is limited BV, which means beer and wine. So this would be a full license. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Absolutely. I would be kind of disappointed if you didn't speak in favor, to be honest.
I have to speak in favor of my wife. So, I'm Chip Cavallaro. Before I get in trouble, she's unfortunately at the BMA meeting. She was asked to speak there. So she sent me instead, unfortunately for you. So, I hope that you consider the application petition. And, you know, we've had a very clean record. We're not changing anything. Kitchen closes at 9:00 PM. We're out of the building by 10:00. I don't have a bar and I don't want one. I need to go to bed before 11:00 every single night. And, so, just keep it very low key, extremely limited selection, and I need the revenue.
Any questions, council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Yes, I'm repeating myself.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, I know it's the council's tradition typically to consider the matter at this point, but you will recall that this license does not yet exist because there is an ordinance that has to be passed first. So I suggest you take that up as D1, the actual granting of the license.
So we'll wait to that point to do that? Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Make sure that everything's in order. Okay, the next item is Item C1, and this is the second reading for adoption of ordinance 2019-15, and this effectively creates the license that is under consideration in the previous public hearing.
What's this council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption to decrease the number of BV limited licenses from six to five and increase the number of BV from 29 to 30.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Agenda Item C2. This is a second reading for adoption of ordinance 2019-17, and this creates a no parking space on Milk Street.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption?
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Item C3, and this is ordinance 2019-18. This is supposed to be the second meeting for adoption. My office is informed that there is going to be a request for a continuance for additional edits.
Yeah, so the last meeting you requested some additional edits. We're also running them by on the administration, so if we could continue that matter for second reading to the next council meeting.
Motion to continue to the December 18th meeting?
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. See how fast we got to D1? That wasn't so bad, was it?
Okay. So, Item D1 considers the application of Jennifer Cavallaro doing business as the Beehive Cafe, request council consideration for a Class BV intoxicating beverage license.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Class BV intoxicating beverage license for Beehive Cafe.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
The next item is Item D2, and this is the petition of Richard Corenti doing business as the Portside Tavern, 444 Thane Street, requests council consideration for a dancing and entertainment license. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, and a late item recommendation from the police department.
They what?
So as the clerk just mentioned, we got some late items. Chief, could you speak to, actually, one moment, I'm sorry. I believe the, I saw the applicant here. Could you, Rich, if you wouldn't mind? Welcome.
Thank you.
I see you have your portside shirt on.
I came from work.
Excellent. Couple of questions for you. There was nothing in our packet that showed what you were actually asking for, and what I mean by that is a diagram of where you would be placing live music or proposed live music, what you were actually looking for for live music, for example, two acoustic guitars and vocals, or, so could you elaborate on that just a little?
Sure, sure. We've only done this once. For Halloween, I came and applied for a one-day license, and after I was approved for a one-day license, I think I was told that we don't really do one-day licenses anymore, and it would make more sense to just get a full-blown entertainment license.
So we can actually, if you're looking for a one day, that, nothing has changed in that regard that I'm aware of?
Maybe I'm...
Well, traditionally, we've only done one-day, Sunday licenses for those places that had regular licenses. So we never had one-day licenses for unlicensed establishments.
Okay.
If the council wants to consider doing that, then it would be fine. It may be a little complicated.
But it is certainly in our purview, if you will.
Certainly, you're capable of doing that.
Exactly. Thank you.
Plus, we cut it very, very close on the Halloween, partly due to me, you know, scheduling. You guys only meet once a month, and it, you know, it could make my life a lot easier if I wanted to do something entertainment-wise. It's not something I want to do often. I think the next night we want to do is New Year's Eve. I would never have, you know, like a large band, you know, three-piece, four-piece full band, thinking more along the lines of acoustic or DJ, like we did on Halloween. Halloween was very smooth. It was a good night. We had a bunch of people there, and it went off without a hitch. It was a very adult Halloween party. Again, kind of like when I first came to you guys, something for the adults to enjoy in town.
I don't have a problem.
Shut up, Mary, your mic's not on.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. You know, obviously, I think you know what I'm going to say, because...
No, I don't.
No, I mean, I do have, I have a lot of concerns about this. Like, I would not approve a regular dancing and entertainment license down there for all the reasons I discussed with you in the summer about just bringing that kind of party atmosphere, the noise, and everything else down there on a regular basis. Now you're saying that you want it only for certain times, and I think it would be, I mean, I don't know what the rest of my colleagues feel, but I think it might be better for you to list out, like, what you want. Like, you're going to probably want New Year's Eve, you know, Valentine's Day maybe, I don't know, you know, St. Patrick's Day, whatever, and, you know, present like six months' worth or still come for the one, for the one day. I mean, I understand what Lou just said, but I just, I just don't, I just want to explain, I have a very serious issue with dancing and entertainment licenses to begin with, and the reason I do, and after we move on, your option, I just want to make another quick motion that relates, if I could, you know, is that I believe, and I've said many times, that the legislature really needs to address this issue, because the dancing and entertainment license is the same whether you want one acoustical guitar with no amplification, or if you want to have like a 10-piece band and all kinds of noise. And once you get that, like, not you, but just when, once a person gets that license, they can pretty much do anything they want. I believe they need to be a little bit more regulated in terms of, like, either not, if you just want an acoustical guitar for brunch, I don't really, I don't think anybody really cares, even, either, the state needs to either exempt that kind of situation, or do like a class, like they do with liquor, like certain types of, you know, this one is easier to get than this other one, so at least we know what we're voting on, because this is everything from, like, I, this is out of fad, but you see how old I am, but like, the wet t-shirt contest down to the one single soloist, you know? So, I think that...
It's quite diversified, yes.
Yeah, it is very diverse, yeah. And, so, that's just my, that's just my issue with this license to begin with. But I think if you're not looking to do something on a regular basis, then there may be a different way to handle your situation and not have like a whole license. I mean, because that pretty much allows you to do any, anything, anytime, and you had said when you first came here for your licenses that you didn't want to have, you know, that you wanted a different kind of a version of a place than, you know, some of the others that you've worked in over the, over the years, and I just see this kind of like eroding to something else. Not that there's been problems at the other places that you've worked, I just, I just know what it's like at that end of, of Thane Street, because I see the ramifications all the time, up, up on High Street and all of these streets in between, on Hope Street and in between, so I just have concerns about it. So that's just my thought for the moment.
Colleagues?
Mr. Corenti, can you talk a little bit about what Halloween looked like for you guys when you had your dancing license? Was there a DJ there? Where was the DJ table? Was it in the back room? Is it, what did things look like?
So, for Halloween, we took out the middle booth in the main dining area. I had a DJ set up right there. We had a little bit of a light show going on. Didn't start until about 10 o'clock. It was over by about 12:15, 12:20. We did a costume contest. Two people from out of town won. I had a couple of people come specifically for it, really, really dressed up. It was just an all-around smooth night, you know what I mean? It wasn't, I would say it was about twice as busy as my normal Saturday. So revenue-wise, it was great, but it wasn't anything out of control, it wasn't anything that I can't handle, and it's not something that I want to do all the time, for sure. I made that very clear when, when I first came in. However, you know, it is a revenue maker, and it is, it is fair to me if I, if, to get the same license everybody else gets. You know what I mean? It would be tough for me to sit there and say, what are the four nights next year I want to do a DJ right now, or this week? And it would also kind of hinder me if, you know, I have to come before this board to have a meeting, you know, let's say somebody wants to, wants to book the place for, for a night, and they want to have a DJ, or they want to have, they want to have live music. I don't, maybe I don't have a month to come in here and, and meet with you guys. So I'm not opposed to, you know, if you want to work on the license or create a new license for this, but it definitely can't be something where I have to wait a month to meet and ask about it, you know what I mean?
I guess, the other question I have might be for, maybe my colleagues here, in that area, do we have any other establishments that do have that dancing and entertainment license? I feel like I remember Christians had come up in this conversation, had...
I don't recall if they did.
There had been some dialogue before when Christians was requesting music.
Christians does have entertainment.
Yes.
I've been there for it.
And they're on the same block, right?
In fact, some of the, some of the musicians that play there are the same ones that I want to play at my place. I have a gentleman who lives right next door to me. You guys, you guys might know him. He's very good, and I haven't specifically talked to him about it yet, but I'd like to. John Tyler's another local guy I'd like to bring in. Pat McGee was in town a few weeks ago. He actually came and started playing acoustically in the middle of the day for some of my guests. It was a good time, but I also could have been in trouble, because I was having entertainment without a license at that time. I don't want to risk that at all, and I don't want to tell a musician, like a good local musician that comes down and wants to entertain my guests, he's not allowed to.
I, I hear where you're coming from. I know, you know, entertainment is part of the whole experience, and you have to make sure you're, you're attracting your customers and bringing them in for different types of entertainment. Chief, I just had a question for you in regards to this license. You recommended to approve it with a six-months review probationary period, and just wanted to check in with you on that, on your thoughts.
Yes, Sergeant Paul Maderas went down and inspected its location, and the reason why I said for a six-month review or probationary status was, we noticed that the business is located to multifamily residential homes, so inevitably, you know, police department generally gets concerns for noise anytime that there is entertainment and when it coincides with the residential and a commercial area. So the problems generally happen when you open up the doors to the establishment, you know, the music follows, travels right outside, and will end up into the residential neighborhood. So that would be the concern that the police department would have for the residents in the area and responding to those calls, and that's why, if you were going to approve it, I would say give us some time to evaluate it so we could come back to the council and report any violations. But we did look to see if there were any calls of service currently at that location or issues, and there were none for this particular establishment that would cause me to deny, make a denial request.
Okay. Can I chime in on that, too?
Of course.
Yeah. Two things I want to say. First off, there is no residence right across from my, my restaurant, and that's where noise travels, it goes straight out. Matter of fact, it's, one of the advantages I have as far as keeping from bothering my neighbors. We don't use the side door at night, that, that's really just for taking out, you know, trash, et cetera, and deliveries. It's all front door, and there's nobody who lives across the street. Second thing I want to say is, Mary, I totally agree with you. There should be different kind of licenses. Unfortunately, at this time, there, there isn't. If there was, I'd be applying for one of those, because there is a difference between what I want to do and what other places do. But again, I came to you guys nine months ago. I've laid out what I want to do. I've kind of, I've stuck to that very, very well over the first nine months, and I'm not changing much. I just, I want to be able to do it when the time seems right, i.e. Halloween, New Year's, these nights that we can all expect that, you know what I mean?
Mike, talk to this council, Mr. Solicitor. Talk to this council about limiting the dancing and entertainment, so for example, the applicant has said, Rich, has said that acoustic, potentially DJ, if we were to find our way to getting to a yes here, remind us again what we can limit.
Sure. So although you couldn't impose a restriction on the type of music under the statute, if the applicant is willing to tell you, look, I'm not interested in a metallic-type band, I'm interested in acoustics, and would accept that as a restriction, you certainly can do that.
Okay. Rich, so it sounds like you want an acoustic music and periodically a DJ. Does that sound right?
Sounds, that's dead on.
And that sounds like something reasonable to you as a, as a condition of, excuse me, granting the license?
Yeah, there's zero chance I want to have any kind of metallic. It's just not me.
What about an acoustic Metallica? Are you okay with that?
I mean, if you can do it...
I'll do the album, too.
The chances, I mean, I'm, I'm so lame, I probably wouldn't even know the difference. You know what I mean? If there is acoustic Metallica out there, like, I didn't notice, you know what I mean? I, I'm one of those guys, I still listen to the same 25 CDs I had in high school. Like, I'm, I'm fine with it. It doesn't even bother me. You know what I mean? My kids know what to get me for Christmas every year, best of the 90s hip-hop.
What other comments?
Well, I'm, I'm agreeable to the six months. It is proposed or recommended by the chief.
I will remind the council that these renew on, for July 1st, so it's going to be in June that you're going to be renewing all the licenses.
So it would seem appropriate just to extend it to June?
Chief, you have no objection to that additional, say, 30 days? Okay. All right. What's this coun, uh, I'm sorry, is there any other dialogue? What's this council's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the dancing and entertainment license with a renewal of at June.
May I ask that you add to that, that, the discussion about the acoustic music and, so, limited to acoustic music and DJ with the agreement of the applicant?
So moved.
Second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
I'm going to abstain on that, if you don't mind.
So we had four and one abstentions.
Is it, is it possible, oh, sorry, that's done, right?
What did you want to say?
I just don't know if I need to put it as a separate agenda item, but, you know, I was thinking, I know we've brought this up many, many times, about, you know, working through the solicitor and our legislators to, to address this issue at the state level. I think that the council should just directly send a letter to our legislative body, our legislators, explaining the situation, it's going to be long, and let their legal counsel at the State House draft up legislation and talk about, like, you know, whether they want to, you know, look at the big picture and exempt certain types of music, like, like a, you know, an acoustical guitar, or they, you know, want to do classifications. But I think, I know I've brought this up about...
You have.
...10 times already, and so I think if, if we could ask our solicitor, and I don't know if it's appropriate for me to, I mean, not our solicitor, our clerk, to make a motion to that effect at this point in time, or if that would have to be on another agenda item.
I believe it's in keeping with the item. I don't have objection to it, so.
So I heard a motion from Mary.
Yeah.
But, but, go ahead, Mike.
But I, I do have a concern, Mary, because this really is not that broad on the agenda, and I'm fine with what you're requesting, but can we just put it on the next agenda and then we won't run into issues, because at some future point, this might become controversial, and I want to be sure it's properly on the agenda.
Spectacular.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Oh, okay.
Good luck. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
Go back to work.
Thank you.
The next item is Item D3. This is the petition of John Hafner doing business at Subway Restaurant, 397 Medicom Avenue, requests council consideration for a viddling license. This is an existing establishment with a new owner. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, the Department of Water Pollution Control, and the Chief of Police.
Make a motion to approve it with the stipulated conditions?
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Is the applicant here? Is John here? No, okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the Item E2. This is the Sunday Sales License Renewals for Package Stores. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, and chief of police.
Did we skip, we skipped the...
You did that, you did that as part of the public hearing? Did you, did you want to take that further?
In fact, yes. I believe that that was, yes.
Yeah, E1 was, was completed with B2.
I thought we did D1.
We kind of flipped.
Oh, no, no, we did.
We did B1.
Yeah, see, you, you had, you had two votes. You closed the public hearing, and then, and then you, you granted renewal.
Okay, so Mr. Solicitor, walk me through, we'd like to go back, we had a, we did an all-encompassing approval, and I believe that we were calling out one in particular.
Right, but that's E2, so I think we're good. E1's been approved, correct?
E2 is actually Sales for...
Sunday.
Sunday Sales. E1 is Intoxicating Beverage License Renewals, 1920.
Yeah, they can just have a motion to reconsider.
That, I'm sorry, so I was looking at that as B licenses. They were A, B, C, they were all the li...
That's, that's, that's the whole shooting match.
Okay, motion to reconsider E1 is what the motion would be.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Why is it E1 and not B1 when we only voted on B1 and incorporated all of them?
B1 is only the public hearing part?
Ah, ah.
So you closed the public hearing? Okay. Just, just for the council's edification, for those of you who are new, some of you have been around for a while, we used to always have these things separated, and then there would be a vote to combine, so we automatically combined them by, by adding the two agenda items together so that you could take care of it all at once and not have to wait.
So I'm going to remind the public, what we're talking about is, is E1 is Intoxicating Beverage License Renewals, and that is encompassing, say, liquor stores and establishments like restaurants, so.
Okay, and so now what you want to do is, it's called Mount Hope Liquors? You want to pull off Mount Hope Liquors, and I would then move to approve all of the others as presented except for Mount Hope Liquors.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And now at Mount Hope Liquors, there's a recommendation for the chief that you make that one for a six-month time period. All the others are a full year that you just approved. Mount Hope Liquors is looking for six months.
Motion to make Mount Hope Liquors renewal on a six-month period moving forward.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Chief, did you need to add anything on this?
The police department, in their review for approving and informing the council, recognized that there were 11 instances where underage persons purchased alcohol from Mount Hope Liquors. So I've reviewed personally every one of those reports. I've been in contact with Department of Business Regulation about additional steps that I could do to work with the owner to combat this particular issue. I've also reached out to the solicitor's office about getting some guidance prior to this evening's meeting.[1662.46] this evening's meeting. I've been working on that for the past month. I also met with the proprietor today. I can tell you, the positive side is, is that every one of the young people that purchased alcohol did produce an identification, it just ended up being identified as being a fake ID by our officers' diligence in the field. They do have training certifications, typically, you know, establishments get TIP certified or STOP certified. There was one clerk who is not certified, and the owner did say that they would have that person certified in short order. So our concern is the number of instances that have happened in one calendar year. I've explained some ancillary tools to the owner, such as he could ask for a second form of ID, he could call the Bristol Police Department, we will respond down to the establishment and assist him in verifying that identification, having anybody sign the book, anybody he asks for that ID, and also contacting, when it is a Roger Williams University student, contacting Public Safety in verifying that person, and ultimately, he has the right to deny the sale if he feels as though that it may be a conflict. So I've gone over all of those tools, provided him with a copy of the law, and let him know that I would be making a recommendation to approve the license to the council, but with the caveat that we take a further review, and if he has any questions, I provided him with my card, I will personally go down and assist him in getting to where we all need to be.
Thank you, chief. Is there any questions?
Thank you, chief, for taking that seriously.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to approve with a six-month review. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Back to E2. This is the Sunday sales license renewals for 2019, 2020. These are the package stores, which include the one that you were just discussing.
Motion to approve the sales licenses renewals for 2019, 2020 as stated.
So with Sunday sales, we're going to do six months as well?
We're going to pull out
Yeah, to be consistent, so you could all make it in one motion, to approve as stated, Mount Hope Liquors, six months.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next are the viddling licenses for 2019, 2020. There's a late item recommendation provided by the chief of police.
Motion to approve the viddling license as stated.
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Additional hours licenses for 2019, 2020, late item from the police department on this one also.
Your recommendation on this one, chief, was to approve?
Yes, we approve.
Thank you.
So based on a recommendation, I move that we approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Amusement device license renewals, that's item E5, and you have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, and chief of police.
Based on favorable recommendations, I make a motion to approve the amusement device license as stated.
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, the holiday sales license renewals for 2019, 2020, that's item E6, and you have a late item recommendation from the police chief also.
Based on the positive recommendations, I move that we approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is item F1, and this is the petition of John Brando to Milford Street, requests council consideration for no parking space across from his driveway. There's late item correspondence provided by the code compliance officer.
So the, the, Mr. Administrator, do you want to speak to this? Sorry, I've got it right here, so I can certainly
Okay.
I know the petitioner's here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I might want to hear from him, and
Absolutely.
And I
Mr. Brando?
Good evening. Good evening, members of the town council. My name is John Brando.
I'm Lee Brevo.
And we live at 2 Milford Street in Bristol. It's a great place to live. It's our happy place, I have lived there for 60 years. I can't remember when our house was the only house on the street at the time. In, in time, three other homes were built, including our new home of 35 years, and next door, our son and his family, and their new home of two years. It's our own little haven. Milford Street is a narrow street, which is also part of our problem. The street measures 18 feet wide, across the street from our home, and also in front of our driveway. This is why we're here tonight. Our first petition was brought to the council back in 2009. After four council meetings, an agreement was made. We were told that our driveway would not be blocked by their vehicles. Well, here we are again, at another town council meeting. Talk about wasting town resources and time. The council has more important issues to deal with, but this matter is very upsetting to my wife and I. It is very difficult for my wife and I and guests to back out of our driveway, especially at nighttime, because it's not a very lit area, and also backing out in a safe manner to be very careful not to collide with their vehicles. Again, let's keep in mind, the road is only 18 feet wide. This is why we're here again tonight, to petition a no parking spot from across our driveway. I would also like to mention that about a month ago, we demolished our family homestead home of 70 years, in order to make a large yard between our home and our son's home. We also eliminated the driveway with that home. Along with that driveway, there was a no parking spot across from the driveway at 4 Milford, which we demolished. With that being said, we are hoping that the no parking spot that we eliminated at 4 Milford Street can be placed across our driveway, that would greatly be appreciated, and solve our problem with vehicles parked across from our driveway. A couple of neighbors have brought to my attention that the roadway should be widened to its normal width of 25 feet. That would solve our problem also, but we need to take the common sense approach here. I feel that it sounds more feasible just to install a no parking sign to solve our problem. At the last council meeting, an agreement was made. They failed to keep up with their end of the bargain. I have evidence here tonight that proves to the council that they failed to keep up with their end of the bargain. I have pictures here, I'd like to show the council.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Again, we would like to say, it makes it very difficult for my wife and I to back out of our driveway in a safe manner. In a closing statement, it would be greatly appreciated for your understanding and consideration on this matter in approving this petition. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. Sorry.
You said enough.
I said enough, right?
You can't say you weren't well prepared, sir. Hey, ma'am.
No.
Okay.
As you can see in picture one, looking out of our driveway, where we're proposing the no parking spot, it's adjacent to a vacant lot, which doesn't infringe on, on the neighbor's property. Picture two, you can see where there's a car parked across my driveway, which makes it very difficult for us to back out in a safe manner. And you can see
So is this vehicle consistently parked here, or is it just
Consistently
Is it miss, I mean
Yes, it is.
It's, so every night, or?
It's not every night, no. I tr, I wouldn't say it's every night.
Okay.
Nope.
But also, we have, a lot of times, parked in front of this vehicle is another vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
So as you're, as you're pulling out of our driveway, the, the cars are right there, to the point where, one, one day I was pulling out, and I hit my wall in the driveway and damaged my car, so I wouldn't hit any of the cars that were parked there.
And have you spoken to the neighbor that constantly parks there?
John, John
Have you mentioned to?
Many times. And the last time, I got verbally abused by the daughter, the son, I said, well, I ain't going to let that happen again.
Right.
You know, so that was our last conversation we basically had. But you can see as the cars parked in picture two across my driveway. All we're asking is just for a car spot, you know, so we can back out with ease. That's all we're asking for there. In picture two, you can see their vehicle parked across my driveway, where ample parking space in front of them, and only, and also in the driveway. And in picture four, you can see the Bristol town-owned vehicle blocking our driveway too.
I see that.
Yeah.
Um Chief, just looking to get your input and your expertise on this type of situation, is this something we could, have you looked into, or?
The information that we provided was Sergeant Vieira responded to this location on, on Milford Street and measured the roadway. Perhaps my counterpart from the DPW could advise, you know, 17 feet, it was the width of the roadway, if that's, you know, considered normal, narrow for the particular area. I would defer to him on that. We checked computer indices at the police department, and they have called the police on two occasions when they were unable to block, back out of their driveway. Officers had to go and locate the owners of the vehicles so that they, they could back out. So there have been calls to the police to address this particular issue.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Can I just ask you, is, are the street, is the street usually filled with cars, or is it?
Not, not really, no, no.
So are these cars that belong to
The neighbors across the street.
That, I mean, they live there, it's not guests, right?
Yes, right. Well, one of them's the boyfriend. That stays there.
I mean, this is a regular occurrence, as opposed to, you know, somebody's having a cookout in the summer, and there's cars everywhere.
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that. People have a cookout or a party, or construction being done, we, we understand that, you know, but when they park there, and they know they're not supposed to park there, and when the police officer goes there and tells them to move the car, and they move it, and then an hour later, the car's parked back in the same spot. It's very frustrating, it really is. You know, it's just been going on for many, many years.
So I've got to be honest, when I first saw this, I was not in favor, I don't like, and I think I can speak for my colleagues on this one, I don't like to get rid of parking spaces. We have so few, the town goes, and, let me get to the end of this, because it sounds really bad, but it's not going to end bad. We have a state street parking lot that we just purchased for hundreds of thousands of dollars. We pay leases downtown for, you know, they've added up quite quickly, for extra parking spaces. We have a police department who does a great job in making sure people are not in the spaces they shouldn't be. We have a lot of dialogue, in fact, we have one coming up to remove a handicap parking spot, and I say, and you'll hear me say it in about 10 minutes, my guest, thank you for bringing this to our attention, so we can make a parking space available. So as I said, it was going to end kind of positive, and I'm, I was not positive for this, because I don't like to get rid of parking spaces, either do my colleagues, but if there's other parking on the street, if it benefits, if it's not negatively affecting the neighborhood or your neighbors, you know, if this was the only other space, if this actually made somebody have to park 100 feet away from the front of their home, I would not be in favor of it, but it doesn't look that way to me.
The parking spot is across from a vacant lot, so it really doesn't infringe on anyone's property.
So if this council sees fit to take the next step, the appropriate next step is that we refer this to the solicitor to create an ordinance, and we would have a first and second reading to create a no parking spot.
Yep.
That is the next step here, if this council wants to go that way.
I think we should, I mean, this has been going on for, you know
Remember, you remember back in '09?
Since 2007, and you've tried to sort of do mediation, if you will, informally, and work with the police, work with the neighbors, I mean, and the fact that it looks like there's plenty of other parking in the area, I would say that we ask the solicitor, I would move that we ask the solicitor to create the no parking space.
And I'll second. And I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? I'll add that, again, you became well-prepared, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to refer to the solicitor to create an ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good Thanksgiving.
You too, as well.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, as the, as the chairman pointed out, we have the petition of Jonah Tufts, 627 Wood Street, informs the council of the existence of an accessible parking space that appears to be no longer needed. This should be the first reading for its removal.
Motion to approve the first reading?
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I would say, you know, again, as to your point, you already said, thank you, you know, for the, to Miss Jonah, is that what it is, Jonah Tufts? To bring that forth to us, and obviously, create that additional space. Well put.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the petition of Tom Bergenholz for Gliding Shops, 205 and 211 Thane Street. Request council consideration for a license to maintain town property adjacent to the, the property leased by Mr. Bergenholz. At this point, it would be a call for a public hearing.
Motion to call for a public hearing?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The, the next is the public service appointment section of the council's agenda. The, the first is the Bristol Housing Authority, there are two vacancies to fill, unexpired terms to expire in January of 2021 and January of 2024. You have two applicants on this agenda, there have been several additional applicants that have come forward since the agenda was published.
Motion to refer to the town clerk to set up interviews?
Second. There's a motion and a second, I'll add that we have to schedule a workshop, as you recall, for short-term rentals, Airbnb, if you will, ordinance conversation. It's potentially that we could set it up there with those. Our next council meeting is in December, but as the clerk said, we have a multitude of applicants. I don't think it's appropriate that we try to fit that many into an hour before the meeting, so I'll work with the clerk, and we'll get something out to everyone, see if it works. It is something, though, and let me say this, is that we lost, we literally lost, two have passed away for the Bristol Housing Authority, so this is something that we do need to move on right away, so.
So do we, we don't have the information on the other applicants?
No.
Okay.
It was, it was literally while the agenda was being published that the, the applicants came forward.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second to refer to the clerk to set up interviews, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Can I just ask you, are they able to function, given that they're down two people? They, they should have a quorum, but that would mean all three people would have to go, am I right?
All three people have to be there for quorum, yes.
Yeah, I mean, is this going to impede, you know, the holidays and stuff, it's going to be a little bit tough to get a meeting together with all these people, but is it going to impede their ability to take action on anything? Do they have anything pressing, does anyone know?
They, they only meet monthly, and, I mean, obviously, there's a need to, to do it soon, but in, in reviewing many, many, many years of minutes, there have been almost no split votes, and there had been times where some of these people couldn't be available, so I haven't heard a specific SOS, but I would imagine that if it's something that could be done in, in a, within the course of, of the next month or so, I think you're going to be safe.
I did speak with the chairman of the board, and it didn't sound like there was attendance issues from the past, and actually, Candy Panza had reached out to me today, I wasn't able to return her call in time, but I'm not aware of anything besides that we do need to move forward on. This board and all boards are important, so.
Right. Thank you.
The next is the correspondence from the chairman of the Christmas Festival Committee putting forth the name of Maggie Nicoletti of 85 Union Street, who is interested in appointment to the Christmas Festival Committee.
So move to appoint based on a recommendation of the chairman of the committee?
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is the part where I say thank you. Thank you to the boards and commissions, the ones that, all of them, that give their time, efforts, and energy. We're coming up to the Christmas event, and the lighting, and all of that, and it doesn't happen all by itself, just like we talk about the Fourth of July, there's a lot of efforts and energies that go into, there's a lot of time away from family, not necessarily friends, right, because hopefully you're surrounded by friends, but away from family to do those things, and this council and the town say thank you.
The next item is item H1. This is the item under old business. This, this considers the petition of Mary Ann Donato and others, requested a four-way This considers the petition of Mary Ann Donato and others requested a four-way stop and road improvements at Mount Hope and Fox Hill Avenues, first heard on, excuse me, August 28th. You have a report from the senior project engineer of Caporo and Wick regarding a traffic evaluation of that intersection and a recommendation provided by the director of Public Works.
Okay. Just wanna make sure. Is Anna here? Anna? Hello, Anna? How are you? Do you mind?
I don't know. Give me a minute. I have a broken phone.
We can, you okay?
Take your time.
It wasn't a traffic accident, right?
No.
No, okay. Are you okay?
I'm fine.
Good. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
So what this council has in front of us is a report from Anna, who's the senior traffic project manager, as the clerk mentioned. Could you summarize what you found? And also, we have some correspondence also from Director McBride. I'm gonna ask you if you could do the same, so.
Okay. Well, basically, what we did was, we did a counting program to evaluate the intersection and also the road. What the counting program gave us was information regarding what happens during the two peak hours of the day, and also what happens in a 24-hour period at two different locations within that road, east of Fox Hill and west. What we found was that the average 85 percentile speed on that road is about 26 miles per hour to the west and around 33 to the east. So you don't really have a speed problem on the road. The data also told us that you have quite a bit of truck traffic. Understandable, because you have DPW on that road. Somewhere around 9% to 10% heavy truck traffic going to the west and around 12% to the east. The intersection itself has overall, during the morning peak, you have about 162 to 200 cars entering that intersection, and that is total volume. That is the two approaches from Mount Hope and the side street, as well as DPW. The worst condition occurs during the PM peak. But when you look at the road, the 24-hour count, you don't have a volume that exceeds 184 vehicles on the main road on Mount Hope on any given hour. That's about your highest. It varies anywhere from nine cars like at 1 o'clock in the morning to 184. Now, when you evaluate an intersection for an all-weight stop, you have to look at a certain amount of information, the accident. The type of accident that occurred there in a period of one year have to be the type of accidents that can be fixed by having a four-way stop, typically broadside or angled type of accident. That's not the case. The volume on the main road total has to be a minimum of 300 vehicles for eight hours of any given day. During those same eight hours, the side street has to have 200 units. And I say units because it means cars, pedestrian, bicycles. If you have that number during the same eight hours that you have 300, that warrants a four-way stop. You don't have that situation at that intersection. Another condition would be if the speed of the road, if the 85 percentile speed of Mount Hope, the main route, is over 40 miles per hour, which you don't have, then you can reduce these values by 70%. Or you have like a 70% instead of 300, you need like 200 and something, I forgot what the number is, but somewhere around there. So you don't have that either. So with that in mind, you don't really warrant a four-way stop. And one thing that is very important is stop signs should not be used for the purpose of controlling speed. That is not something that you do. It's not the intent of a stop sign. So when I looked at this, I also went and traveled up and down Mount Hope and evaluated the road. One of the things that I found about the road was some of the striping is faded or non-assisted. Some of the signs are very, have faded themselves. Parking signs where parking is permitted, in some locations are there, but in some locations they're missing. So as I drove the road and based on the analysis that I did, I don't recommend that a four-way stop be installed at the intersection of Fox Hill and Mediacom, but I do recommend that maybe some striping be done, like centerline stripings on the road. Look over the signs, evaluate the conditions of those signs, and replace the ones that are faded with more clear signs, identify your parking and your non-parking areas clearly. Speed signs, you have to be already in that road to realize that the speed sign is 25 miles per hour. You should have a sign at either terminus of Mount Hill to identify for someone like me who is from outside, who is not familiar with the road, that that is your speed. The other thing I would recommend maybe is the possibility of looking at where you have your parking, you know, is you just can look at it. I mean, these are the kind of things that Mr. McBride, as a transportation engineer, I'm sure he's more than qualified to evaluate.
So I would ask, first, are you comfortable standing there for a little bit?
Yeah, I'm holding on for dear life, but I'm fine. I'm kidding.
You're not making me feel more comfortable, I just, I wanna make sure that you're comfortable.
I've broken that toe many times, so I'm used to it.
Okay, all right. So at any point you need to sit down, you just tell us, okay?
I will.
All right, okay. Director McBride, so you had also written, and it sounds as though if most of this is in line with your recommendation, there was a, it was, in fact, Anna, you brought it up in regards to the parking on the side and the lines, but after that, it sounded like we were on the same page? Is that true?
Yeah, it is correct. You know, we had a staff meeting relative to the report that Anna prepared for us. And basically, you know, as I had mentioned to the town administrator earlier and also the chief of police, that when I first got here, we striped that road. It has faded subsequently, but that's part of several roads that I looked at for a program to do. We held back on doing that program until we got the final report so that we could make sure it was included. At this point in time, it's a little too cold to put the striping down that I wanna put. It's not the material that I used last time. I wanna use the material, an epoxy type resin that we put on the road to last longer. My plan is to do numerous streets in town, Mount Hope included. I noted in my memo that in discussions with the police department and the town administrator, we had some concerns about striping completely from Wood Street to Mediacom. As you know, there's a lot of residents that, you know, literally abut the back of right-of-way in that area, and as we talk about parking and the necessary parking spaces, we don't wanna create a situation where we impede the parking that's occurring there now, but should we stripe the centerline through the entire length of that road, we may create an additional problem, and that is, as the traffic flows today, they'd have to move left to center to avoid parked cars.
Okay.
And now we're talking about an issue with, relative to traffic enforcement, and I think the chief of police can certainly speak to the fact that if somebody's left the center, that's a violation, and now have we created another hardship on our residents, which we certainly don't wanna do. But again, we're looking at traffic safety, and that's what this was all about. Couple of the other things that we concurred with, with Anna, obviously, the signs, they fade over time, they have to be replaced. Speed signs for the road, typically what I do is get with a member of the police department, we ride the road, figure out where we'd like to place the additional signage, I order them, and then we put them up. So that can be done pretty quickly, as we did on Hopeworth a few months back. Not a problem there. Parking signs, again, if they're faded, we need to fix those. If we stripe the road for parking, we gotta be careful how we do that, as I mentioned a few minutes ago. We don't wanna create an undue hardship on our residents because they have to park on the street in most cases. There's not really anywhere else for them to go, so we need to keep that in mind as we move forward. If parking or no parking zones, more importantly, are warranted, then obviously the council needs to consider that in the future, and there's an ordinance to do that. But we don't wanna haphazard approach to that. And finally, I believe Ms. Novo noted that she recommended a crosswalk at Fox Hill. Absolutely. We'll, you know, we'll install the crosswalk with the striping program that we do, as well as a stop bar at Fox Hill to further highlight that. Other than that, I think we were pretty much, we were never in complete disagreement with the report that was prepared. Traffic counts certainly vilified what we had thought, both the acting police chief and the pastor, myself, when we looked at it. And again, one thing I wanna note, she talked about the high percentage of trucks. We've had an inordinate amount of construction taking place, water construction, tanya Brook construction, they're using the field adjacent to our area as a staging area for several projects, so the volume of trucks has been high over this past year. So I expected that truck volume or percentage to be high. It will reduce next year once those projects are completed. So that will help traffic flow as well.
Mr. Administrator and chief, did you have anything that you wanted to add to this? It sounds like it was an all-encompassing report.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think it was a very complete report, and I concur with the recommendations for the striping maintenance and also the crosswalk on Fox Hill.
Okay. All right. Tony?
I, you know, I know Mr. Donato's here, and I think it's important that, obviously, we took it pretty serious, you know, back in August when you brought it to our attention. And actually, the cost for this study was approximately $4,000, $4,000. So obviously, and also, we have some serious recommendations, so it's very much appreciated, you know, the efforts they've put on, and obviously, the cost as well. But it's worthwhile, the safety of our residents. So thank you for bringing that to our attention, obviously, the report. And I concur with the recommendations that are being made here.
Yeah, I thought the report was very thorough, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to refer this to the town administrator and the DPW to implement the recommendations, as DPW director has stated, you know, correct the fading striping, the signage replacement, and to look into the maintenance issues. So, but thank you again for your report, it was very thorough.
Second. So there's a motion and a second, discussion?
Ms. Novo, oh, well, you're walking away with a broken toe. I don't want you to have to go back, but maybe, I think Kevin might be able to address this a little bit. So I think, you know, especially for the viewing audience, I know it doesn't sound like fixing some of the striping and everything like that would have a significant impact on slowing people down and everything like that as they're driving. Is there, can you explain a little bit how that would actually, even if it's by a couple miles per hour, it would be a significant difference?
Well, I think, you know, when you add the centerline striping to any road, that, first of all, that controls traffic flow in opposing directions. On Mount Hope Avenue, you have varying widths of travel lanes, just based on the way the road's configured. You also have a significant S curve as you approach prospect. So the centerline will guide you through that curve. That's number one, and that's critical. Number two, when we, in the areas that we allow parking today, say, for example, the eastern end of Mount Hope Avenue, you shift that centerline over to accommodate that on-street parking. So that's important as well, because now the lane width narrows down, you just slow down because of the narrowed lane width in itself. So the narrowing of the travel lane is one, because if you don't have the centerline striping, as you look at it today, it's very faded, it's almost like it's a one-lane road, you know what I mean? So there's plenty of room to operate at a higher speed. When you put that centerline in, it will slow the traffic down. So we don't have a traffic speed issue as her scientific investigation did, and also as noted by the police department in their recordings as well, which is a good thing. It's a real good thing. So we did prove what we thought. So when we add the centerline striping, I think you'll see a marked improvement.
So Mary Ann Donato is here as the, we'll call you the major petitioner, because I know there was a lot of people on there, but you were in the forefront of that, which I'd like to give you an opportunity to share your thoughts.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for doing the study, and it was, I think the road improvements, the suggestions would improve the traffic flow. I would say I still have some concerns, and our neighbors do as well, about the speed. We felt that the study was somewhat skewed because when the traffic trailer is present, even if the display is off, cars tend to slow down. They recognize that trailer, and they slow down. So I still would like to see the police department monitor the speed on the road. They did step up enforcement in the area, and I'd like to see that continue. And I hope that at some point, I know it's probably, it's quite a bit of money, to see the town purchase more of the traffic trailers so that they're able to deploy them in the neighborhood more. I understand there's only two of them right now. I think you need at least four of them, because in our area...
You may be preaching to that choir right there, so.
Yeah. It really did make a difference, and even, even when that display wasn't on, there has been considerable construction in the area, and that's also slowed down traffic, because when you have a bulldozer parked on the side of the road, people do tend to slow down.
Kevin, do you wanna, it looked like you wanted to share something.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing, that the, the traffic counts and the speed analysis that was conducted by Ms. Novo had nothing to do with the police department's trailer. That was, they did a weight and motion speed analysis, so those traffic tube counters were out there, did the speed counts as well. So it wasn't just based on the police department's visible trailer on the road.
I think her point, if I may, was that when you walk into a yard with a big dog, you step lightly, kind of thing? So I think that people may have seen that traffic, and I think that's a fair point. But I know that there was, this was not one day or one hour, this is, this is a lot of information, so people also get a little bit complacent with the big dog after a while and need to be reminded that he or she may bite.
Yes.
That was a great analogy. Did you see what happened there with that? Yeah, wow, interesting.
Could be a big bite.
I didn't know how I was gonna get out of that, but I, to the end. But this council thanks you for bringing this to our attention. We, as you can tell, the council and I, and the town, and the administrator, and the departments, and Anna, is Anna still here, or did she leave? Can you blame her? She broke her toe, cheapest crow. We took this very seriously, and I was joking there, but we appreciate you bringing it to us, and we wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence, and I think it went above and beyond that. But it's also our responsibility moving forward to make sure that this continues, is that these improvements actually make improvements. I can speak for our police department and say that the focus is not going to go away completely, because they focus everywhere. And if there's an issue, I'd ask that you bring it to the police department's attention, and we're always willing to, let me see if I could, educate and then enforce, right? So, thank you.
Thank you.
So we had a motion and a second. Oh, chief, yes, please.
If I could make a recommendation to my colleague, I realize the weather may not permit for the epoxy striping that he would like to do, but perhaps we could go out and get the signage changed and get the speed limit signs up in the interim while we're waiting for the spring to come to, you know, split down the striping.
Absolutely. Completely concur with, completely concur with the chief on those. Those are things that we can do right now.
Perfect.
Do you need a motion to that?
No.
No.
Okay. We had a motion and a second to refer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, for all the hard work.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, is item I1, and this is a request from the director of community development for an executive session, which we will take up at the conclusion of the public agenda. The next item is item I2, also from the community development director regarding the Bristol Golf Course improvements and a request for authorization to file a DEM recreation grant application.
Diane Williamson. And we need a bigger table, I think.
I know. We've had everybody here, Tom.
It's cold.
So, thank you. This is a, we're asking for the council's authorization for the open recreation grant application and for the match. This is a project that you've probably heard about, I'm hoping you've heard about before. It's improvements to the Bristol Golf Course. We did get a grant earlier to do watershed restoration, water quality improvements, which are ongoing. We've created the master plan.
Diane, would you explain, you don't have to go deep in, but watershed improvements?
Watershed improvements, we're looking at daylighting some pipes. We're looking at creating buffer areas around the streams and the ponds so that they, they don't, we don't get the geese coming there and visiting.
And having them leave stuff, too, right?
And, right, not the visiting, it's the going. We have, you know, it's an area that is in the Silver Creek watershed. It's an important part of the Silver Creek watershed, and it's a unique opportunity because it is open space, but it's also recreation. So we're looking at the watershed, wetland restoration, and improving the life of the streams and the ponds, but also improving the recreational component with the opportunity to design and place new tees and new holes that are, make better playable golf courses. Some tees were moved to improve the safety of the playing, so that you're, you're not hitting the balls where it's not safe to hit them. We're looking at possibly putting in some irrigation to keep the greens well, you know, green?
Green, yes.
Green. So, so the amount that we are asking for, the maximum we can ask for, is $400,000. We have preliminary pricing from our consultant engineer, and so with the previous grant, the grant that we're hopeful to get, and the match, we'll be able to complete this entire project. So the match was, based on the preliminary cost estimates, $217,802.
So that match would, if I understand you correctly and what we read in front of us, it will improve what is there, it will improve runoff or in the quality of the runoff... us, it will improve what is there, it will improve runoff, or in the quality of the runoff? So meaning water coming into our streams will be, I want to put quotes in the air and say cleaner on there? Am I right with that?
Yes, absolutely. It'll get, it'll, it'll help restore this wetland. I mean, this, this area has been mowed, manicured. It really needs to be restored to let it work as a wetland. And then there are streams that have, they've been, it's been mowed right up to the edge of the streams. There are some pipes that pipe stormwater, which can be daylit and let nature, nature at work. Let, let it run through areas to clean the pollutants before it gets into Silver Creek.
So, Mr. Minister, can you speak to the recreational portion of this?
Yeah, I'd love to. We're trying to make the golf course back to a viable, enjoyable golf course. And with us today, it'd be a good time for me to welcome back Sarah Klein, Director Klein. She's, she's back here with Tim Shaw, who held Recreation Together for the last year. But Sarah, welcome, and we admire your strength, and welcome back to work.
You look great, Sarah, too, yeah. And Tim, you did a great job while she was gone, too.
So we've walked the course a number of times with Assistant Director Shaw. The architect is here also tonight, and you're probably thinking, well, this is a little bit of a contribution, $217,000. But we have, we have good visions for our golf course. It's a municipal golf, golf course. We own it. And the plan would be, once we're up and running, we're going to do a new RFP for an operator, put it out on the fair market. And we believe that there's a good, it's, there's a chance that we could make a pretty good revenue on that course. We're, it's already receiving some buzz that it's, it's exciting. We believe that there is a market, and the architect is here, there is a market for this size executive course, a very small course, in an industrial park. But the neat thing about it is, we have a recreation team that's very interested in getting our youth involved with golf, getting them out in the outdoors. One of our preliminary meetings was with Save Bristol Harbor, and they're very interested also in having youth out in, in, outdoors, in, in nature. So that's the type of course that this is going to be. Yes, it's in a, in a industrial park, but there's going to be a strong educational portion of it. So with an RFP for new management, open to new ideas, with an investment in not only the, the wetland improvements, but also the playability of the course, we think that we're off to new horizons. Another part of that course is in what we're seeing with a neighboring Massachusetts course, is a small executive course there. You see many seniors playing during the day. It's a small, walkable course, excellent for exercise in fresh air. So we think that there's a market right here in Bristol. We own it, and we're just trying to get it back, back up in where it should be. But I would really love to have the architect here.
I was just going to say, I would like to hear what changes are being proposed on this. I like to call you Mr. Architect. Is that a, yeah? Welcome, Tom.
Thank you.
Could you walk us through, can you give us a summary of what's different and what's the same?
Yep. Well, we have a, we have a plan here. This is the master plan that's been developed over the past six months. We finished the planning phase, and now we're moving toward the design phase. So like Diane had said, the grant that we're working from right now, we're focused in on water quality improvements. I personally had the opportunity to work, we were the engineer for the town beach and rec facility, and those improvements that we made there, doing the BMPs and capturing all the stormwater geese, that made an immediate improvement to the water quality at the town beach, and we worked with Sarah at that time. The second project that we worked on was for Guitarras. My daughter played soccer on the field. My daughter went to Guitarras School. So that was another opportunity, another grant. That was a, that was a 319 grant from DEM. We built, again, low-impact development BMPs. With that, and what, you know, the brilliant thing that Diane and Ed does is the way they craft a, a water quality grant, but they get so much more out of it by doing addressing at the town beach, just a whole new master plan for that.
Tom, don't give all of our secrets away, okay?
Yeah, yeah, no.
I know.
And then at, at Guitarras, that started with just a great idea of a discovery garden for the students, and then we were able to craft a whole different layout. And I know Councilman Texeri, you were there for the ribbon cutting. That was great. The students loved that. So Diane and Ed pulled together a different type of water quality grant, a SNAP grant, very similar, but different, some, some different aspects to it. But we're going to use the same kind of principles that we used so successfully over there. We're going to use them at the golf course. You pretty much know what they are, but if you've ever been to the golf course, if you haven't been there in a while, it's, it's a course that, as Diane said, is completely manicured from the property line perimeter right down to some small streams and trees. So that's great, but what ends up happening is the geese are the problem. And the park, the golf course actually breaks toward Silver Creek and the harbor, and it breaks north to Jacob's Point and Baggy Wrinkle up in the Warren River watershed. So we got two, two watersheds that we can improve, and the geese are a complete nuisance, and they have no fear out there because they can see. There's no, there's no predators, so they feel very comfortable there. So by building BMPs along the, where the, where the ponds are now, you know, grasses, like you see at a typical golf course, you know, they, they get a little bit concerned about what's in those grasses. They might think that there may be a predator. We're not trying to eliminate the geese, but we're trying to discourage them to a point. And plus, these buffer areas, the way we're going to design them, will be able to, you know, pull up the, any E. coli runoff. It'll reduce the nitrogen, and that's, for Silver Creek, I know we've worked with Save Bristol Harbor. Silver Creek, as it breaks from the golf course across Gooding, they've already sampled, and this really high E. coli and nitrogen hits there. So we can really make a super impact right there by designing those BMPs. And then the way Diane and Ed crafted it was, you know, it's, it's a course that needs some attention, and maybe now's the time to do a master plan. So that's what we did, and we were able to create a master plan where we're trying to keep as many as the existing tees, and, but there's a couple of runs that are just really kind of poor, not very enjoyable, not playable. So now's the time to think ahead. Let's, let's reorientate the play. Let's do the water quality first. That's what we're focused on. But what Diane's saying is, we're going to fall short of doing a full project. And I think if you had just that next grant to take it to and really finish the project, I think that it would really make it an attractive course.
Tony?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that base and the vision that we have, you know, for the golf course, that we go forward and pursue the grant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
No, I just think it's, it's great. It's a great project. You know, I think a lot of business, it actually enhances the industrial base there because you look at businesses, they're looking for life balance, teamwork, getting out there on the golf course. A lot of deals are made, and I think it's going to enhance that, that business park. And also, I agree, it's great that it ties in the kids, the schools, parks, rec. So I think it's awesome. Diane, I know when I worked at FM Global, they had a geese issue as well, and what they did is they brought in a dog walker, and they brought in dog, I don't know, every once in a while, they brought in dogs, and it seemed to clear up the issue. So I don't know if we can tie in some sort of path where people could encourage people to maybe walk their dog or something. I don't know.
As long as they pick up.
As long as they can pick up, exactly. But long as I'm sure of that, I'm sure this, this is going to be a successful project.
This is, I just want to thank you guys again for all the work that you've done on this. And my whole position on these types of projects are that they're a good investment. They're, they're a good upfront investment. So when I see figures like $200,000, I don't think $200,000. I think 20 years, that's $10,000 a year. And when 20 years comes, we're going to be, we're going to be saying, thank God we had the foresight to do things like this because of all the flooding issues and things like that that we're going to be dealing with. And when you're talking about things like daylighting pipes, that gray infrastructure, the pipes and everything like that, those were some of the things of the past, and now we're starting to tear that stuff out of the ground. Because we know that when we're getting the flooding and everything like that, that's what's going to cause the drain, the proper drainage and everything like that. It's going to actually improve the biological, the wildlife of that running water because it's going to be exposed to the elements and everything like that. And so...
That's great.
So I'm fully in support of these types of projects, and I just can't wait to brag to my environmental policy students about this kind of stuff and, and use it as another example where Bristol is just, has another best practice out there that other towns and other communities can replicate. And when other communities replicate these projects, that helps us out, too, because we're all connected by the same water. So.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is from the chairman regarding the town beach and sports complex soccer field LED light project.
Tim?
Yes.
Welcome in.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There we go. All right. As the town clerk has said, we are in the process of also applying for an RIDEM rec development grant. And what we're looking to do is provide an LED light source at the three terraced soccer fields down at the town beach sports complex. There's a lot of usage that happens over there, and it's not just by BYSA, which is serving hundreds of Bristol families seasonal basis from the spring through the summer into the fall. We get heavy usage there. It's not just by them. We do have a lot of separate groups that happen there. I mean, during the day, can't pop a squad in the summer times there. But also, we do host the Superliga, which is a statewide soccer league that Bristol does participate in. We're a location for the Special Olympics events at the state tournament. We also work with the Mount Hope alumni, specifically the soccer alumni, who has been doing the Timothy Day Pond benefit over there, and that which has become a great event. And beside the state and regional tournaments that we offer, it's, they're beautiful open space, so there's a lot of passive recreation that happens there. We do have a lot of people on a daily basis, 365 days a year, that you'll see walking, running, self-organizing. We got a solid group of ultimate frisbee players that get out and play. So it's, it's a great, great set of fields that we do have over there. But the problem that we have is, we shrink down when it comes to the shoulder season. So when we're able to start, and soccer predominantly being a fall season, a fall sport, as the days get shorter, you know, it's difficult for parents to get out of work, get over there, have a soccer practice before the sun sets. So we're looking to, for the amount of people that use this facility, we're looking to expand the usage when it comes to, you know, earlier, later, but also on a daily basis, being able to use the facility later into the evening.
I had been reached out by the BYSA, right, Bristol Youth Soccer Association Representation, including Dennis Maddos, going back probably four years? And Tim and I had walked this property with representation from DEM a couple of years ago, something along, I don't know. It's, it all seems to be...
Less than a year ago, actually.
Less than a year ago, so you look at the time goes...
At least, most recent.
And the conversation was exactly what Tim had just said, is that there's beautiful fields that you can't use past 5 o'clock in the fall. You know, as the time changes, it's dark and it's not safe, too. So this was an opportunity for not only Bristol youth, but as Tim correctly and well did a great job sharing, is there's so much use of these fields and they're underutilized. And I talked to Janet Coit, Director of DEM, going back too, and this grant that came out and the opportunity seemed like a perfect time for us to take advantage of some state funds and, and enhance what is already a beautiful place down at our Bristol Town Beach. There's so, the facility is just outstanding there. So this is just the next step to use that. And that's, and Tim and all did a great job. And obviously, we don't have the grant, but this is our next step to get there. But I'm pretty confident that we do such a great job with these that it'll be bright there next fall. That's the hope, right?
That's the goal. And just to get on the numbers here, an estimated cost for Musco Lighting, who is the company that the town used to do the lighting at the men's softball field there, and also, I believe they're also at Mount Hope High School. So Musco Lighting is a great company. They're, they have a great product. They stand by it. And there's a lot of accessibility, a lot of, you know, we're able remotely from a phone to turn lights on. You know, if we have, you know, a coach get in touch with us to get a light on. I still, I think this is something that we've inherited from Walter, is we'll have the hockey players, if the lights get shut off a little too early in the season, getting in touch with us to turn the court lights on, which is great because, you know, we have people using the spaces that we have here in town. So the estimate for the project to light up those three fields, and I'm talking about the three terraced soccer fields, is approximately $600,000. The grant that we're applying for is 400. So we're looking at a commitment from the town of roughly $200,000.
It's a lot of money, Tim.
It is.
But I know it's used well. And, and it's going to be used for, actually, I'll quote from, from my colleague to my left, right? Aaron had said that this is, you got to look out 10, 15, 20 years out. And if you've ever been to, and I use BYSA as a, as a great example, if you've ever been there on a Saturday morning, it's difficult to find the grass. There are so many children there. So it is a well-used place. And just, oop, sorry.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, like, one of the things that, you know, we do really well here, fortunately, and thank Diane and many other people, Walter and others over the years, is, you know, the ability to leverage our resources and our money. So it sounds like a lot of money, and it is certainly, like, in the last few minutes, like, to authorize around 217,000, I mean, $417,000. But for that is lighting all those fields, a whole new revised golf course area that is also, you know, improved water quality. I mean, that is a lot of money. That is a lot of bang for your buck, and that is something that I think we have been very well-known for. And I think this continues that whole approach that we take, to be able to go after and to be creative and to think creatively and go after all the money that's, that's out there. You know, not all towns can do it, and I'm always amazed that people are, you know, like, we've heard it from our congressional delegation, we've heard it from our state agencies, you know, so many towns can't, they might apply, they might get the money, but they can't get it together to get the project done. And we have a good reputation of getting these projects, getting the grants, getting the projects done on time and in budget. And I think that is, you know, a really shining star that we are. And much, as I said, much of it goes to Diane and the work she's done, Walter and the work that he did when he was here, and to so many people that, you know, and I think to the town council and the administration as well for, you know, seeing this and saying like, wow, it's a great, it's a great deal if we can get these grants, and look at what we get for it. So thank you for bringing that to us.
I'm also in support of this project. I look at it as a health benefit to the town. I think it's really important to expand those months and allow people to do physical activity. That's so important to providing teamwork and keeping your body healthy. I was just curious on the, the warranty and the service on the lights. Have you been able to take a look at that and make sure that it's a good one?
Yes. So again, speaking on Musco Lighting, who I've also, having been employed in Middletown, we worked with them to light up a men's softball field, actually a softball field in town there. And I was kind of blown away with the way they stand by their product. And this is if we were to go, if this was the company that were to win the bid, if we were fortunate to get these DEM grant monies. They have a 25-year unmatched warranty that includes onsite maintenance. I know at the end of the 25th year, they do come in, they replace bulbs and everything else. So then as, unless you want to re-up with a warranty, you know that after that 25th year, you're moving on with all-new bulbs. We know that, you know, a month after that 25th year passes, we're not having to try to figure out to get the bucket truck there to get up and replace some of these bulbs. It is, you know, they're LED, and it's the 24/7 monitoring that's happening. So if, they have somebody, they're located in Iowa, so they're constantly monitoring, you know, the multiple fields that they have throughout the country. you know, the multiple fields that they have throughout the country. And we'd be one of them if we were fortunate enough to get this. So it's, it's something that I think is a great product and, and it's a great company if we were to work with them.
Well, I hope we get the grant. So I'll make a motion to authorize the filing of the Rhode Island DEM Recreation Grant Application.
Second.
Discussion Mary, then. Yes. I mean, I was around when those fields were built. I remember us installing the sprinklers there. So this is a great addition to it, you know, an improvement to make sure that we, you know, capitalize and make the most use of those facilities. I mean, we certainly, those fields are envied by many of the people throughout the state when, I remember when I was involved with Bristol Youth Soccer Program. And they certainly, they look forward to, to come to Bristol. Well, this was certainly will put the, the ice on the cake, you know, and to have those facilities to be used, the around and as you pointed out, some of the tournaments that we hold and the major league, the, you know, so looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Great move. Thank you for pursuing that.
Appreciate it.
Well, you know, I was a lot more excited about the watershed grants and everything like that. I think it tells you a little bit about what kind of person I am to, but you know, I, I still support this. This is, this is good and I'm glad that you're doing this. And the, the only thing that I would ask is that you might start thinking about when you're applying for this grant, what are some of the things that we're going to do once all this is installed that we can really get the word out to people that, hey, look, we have these lights, we can have these events now during times that we never had those times before. So what are we going to do to, you know, make sure that the word gets out about that or to add certain types of activities and things like that so that these are getting used? The thing that I would always worry about them, that I would worry about the most is, and this is probably would never happen, but that the lights would be installed and they just wouldn't be used, right? Or.
We are no danger of that, sir.
Yeah. So, so I, but I think still like, you know, the possibilities I think are if we get the lights, let's think about like the real possibilities of what we can do with this area and, and then that's where I get really excited about that kind of stuff.
Yeah. And, oh, I'm sorry, councilman.
No, I haven't been involved. I, I hear your concern, but I can assure you, have, have been involved with recreation and know what's taking place, you know, still. No worries, they'll come to use very quickly. I can assure you of that.
So we had a motion and a second to support. Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council is bid 917. This is for the compost facility improvements. This was continued from your October 30th meeting. You have five proposals submitted. The first from JML Excavation Incorporated of Bristol. The amount is 265,614. The second is Heart Engineering Corporation of Cumberland, Rhode Island, in the amount of 410,000. The third from JJ Cardosi Incorporated of Riverside in the amount of 332,000. The fourth from Tower Construction Corporation of Cranston in the amount of 422,000. And the final from Urbane Construction Corporation of Cranston with the bid amount of 387,700.
Before we take a motion on this, Jose, could you take a moment and explain to this council and to the public what this bid was for and what it improves?
Certainly, I'd be glad to. The compost facility has been in operation for approximately 28 years. It was located on the closed landfill, so the buildings and the operation is on a, a closed landfill that has settled over time. So we have a few storage buildings that were built on blocks and basically a quonset hut. And over those last 27, 28 years, it has settled and they're ready to fall out. The asphalt of the area has also settled, so there's a problem every time it rains. We have puddles, we have ducks, not.
No geese?
No geese, yes.
No, okay.
But we have ducks. And so it's just an area that does need attention, needs to be upgraded. Storage builders, we can't, we process the material, restore it, and it's getting wet because of the way the, the asphalt is pitched and the buildings are ready to fall.
Thank you. Are these the two first huts as you drive into the transfer station on your left-hand side?
No, there were four huts. The two nearest the Medicom is the chipped yard waste. We have added metal supports to the sides. We'll get some more life out of them, but eventually maybe half a dozen years, 10 years from now, we will need to replace those. The ones that are needing to be replaced now are at the furthest from the scale house. They're in the lower part in the area that was more active as a landfill and that settlement from the material decaying has created quite a bit of settlement.
So that's right across from the yard waste, pretty much?
Yeah, where the yard waste is brought in.
Is there any other questions?
Make a motion to refer to the town administrator and Jose to act in the best interests of the town.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is J2 and this is bid 915-2. This is for On Call Interior and Exterior Painting Services. You have four proposals. The first is from Westway Construction of Bristol in the amount of 56 dollars and 42 cents an hour. The second is Scholar Painting of Providence in the amount of 86 dollars and 25 cents an hour. The third is from Rayoni Rodriguez of Bristol at the amount of 56 dollars and 42 cents an hour. And the fourth is from Strategic Solution Team LLC of Providence in the amount of 180 dollars an hour.
Make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interests of the town.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is bid 919 and this is for drainage improvements at Lugeant Lane. We have three proposals received. The first is from Skirka Construction of West Warwick in the amount of 75,500. The second from JML Excavation Incorporated of Bristol in the amount of 62,334. And the third from CB Utility Company, also of Bristol, in the amount of 75,000.
Make a motion to refer to the town administrator and the community development department to act in the best interests of the town.
Second.
There's a, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Apologize.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, we have bid number 920. This is for the Byfield School Masonry Wall Stabilization. We have one proposal from Folan Waterproofing and Construction Company Incorporated of Southeastern Massachusetts in the amount of 156,900.
Is this, is this for the whole building or just?
No, this is for the north wall and south wall. I'm going to say it's a little bit more than we, we can afford right now. We did stabilize the walls, they were pinned. We had, we recognized that we had an emergency situation approximately nine months ago. The walls were separating, the exterior wall and the internal wall. So we had them pinned, we had an engineer come in, take a look at it, give us a plan. So we pinned the walls together. But I will, you know, with the council's consent, I can certainly meet with this person, but we, we have an idea what the materials would cost to do the work.
And because there was only one bid, we have an opportunity to negotiate.
Yeah, our building official is here if you had any questions about the building. But we've been, we've been working, we've been working on shoring it up. We had several other issues. We had a trust that was broken up in the attic and the front wall, that was part of the, the Champlin Grant, we were able to fix the front, which was the west wall of Byfield. So we're nearing on completion and Director McBride is assigning two general maintenance men from DPW this summer to pull the windows out and work on the windows. So the building's just about complete and where we, where we need it.
I think you meant during the winter, right?
Winter, yeah.
Oh, you said summer.
What did I say? Summer?
It's okay. It's a wish, Steve.
It's a wish. I was just going to ask, is, so structurally after this project, the building's in pretty good shape. I mean, we, we put a lot of work into it.
Yeah.
I mean roofs, I mean, working on the west, west wall, the front facade. I think the east facade, right, gutters. I mean, it's been a lot of, a lot of going on there. So hopefully we'll be in good shape.
Deferred maintenance now done.
I know, I know. Never ends, right?
Richard, question on this. It's my understanding that, that this work that was bided out was very similar to the work that was done at the Maritime Center, is that right? Meaning this particular portion of it to fill the middle of the wall, is that what this is?
Yes, actually the engineer that we hired to study this is the same engineer that we use down at the Armory.
Okay.
John Watney from Structures North. So it's, it's a similar process that we're going to be using there. A little different. It's a, you know, it's a brick veneer that's pulling away rather than granite of the Armory, but similar. And we, as Steve said, we pinned it, you know, just to stabilize it. And this would be the last thing to, to route it together and bond the veneer wall with the inner whites of brick.
Okay. All right. So what's this council's pleasure?
Refer to the administrator to act in the best interests of the town.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
The next we have individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
So in an effort to continue to be brief at the end of the meeting, a couple of quick things. First off, recently Veterans Day, we had the event at the Bristol Veterans Home, oh, sorry, Rhode, look at me go, the Rhode Island Veterans Home, excuse me. But there's also the wreath laying at our War Garden at 8:30 in the morning. And I think I mentioned this a lot, but I think it's worth saying it again. That to me is the most solemn and one of the most beautiful occasions because it's a thank you and it's a heartfelt thank you with, with very few words. There's taps played by Bristol resident Steve Scuba and some kind words from Mr. Koella. And it's just, the attendance is quiet, it's solemn, but it's beautiful. I was watching a commercial recently about St. Jude's and I'm going to steal a line from them. They said, "I wish there was a word bigger than thank you." And I thought that was well captured. So we said that many times at Veterans Day celebration. I'm going to say it again for all of us. Thank you to our veterans. Thank you for the men and women who have served, who are no longer here, that are here today. We would not be here today without your willingness to put your life on the line so we can have and enjoy and talk about things like golf courses and lights on a field. And they are very important things, but we wouldn't have that opportunity without your willingness to put yourself in harm's way. And an opportunity to say thank you again to all the people is Thanksgiving. That's coming up, so I hope you all enjoy it and, and don't forget, and I know we won't, but don't forget about your friends and neighbors who don't have anybody to spend it with. Sometimes it's the food and sometimes it's just a warm hello and just a couple of minutes with them to make their day and also to make your day. So happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Mr. Sweeney.
Well said, Mr. Chairman. Very nice. I just wanted to congratulate Dr. Bryce. He was the interim school superintendent, he's now our superintendent. So as a member of the JFC, we all are, standing here at this body, we looking forward to the upcoming JFC budget and working with you. To our police department, congratulations on the accreditation, excellent job. And I heard Senator Jack Reed was in town about two weeks ago and I just loved his quote in The Phoenix where the senator said, "We are happy to help with the 1.2 million federal grant. The town has done an extremely good job, very well managed. Bristol town leaders are aggressive at projects and they do it on time and in budget." Well, that's definitely something to be thankful for. So I was just happy to please to see that. And then finally, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and I hope to see everybody at the Grand Illumination, which we on Saturday, November 30th, from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Burnside Building. It really is a wonderful, wonderful night. So with that, have a great Thanksgiving, have a good night. Thank you.
Mr. Texira.
The first item, we'd like, I have two things. One is I know every 10 years we do the chatter review. Chatter, is that something that we're considering at all for next year, for 2020?
Absolutely.
Excuse me?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, so that's something maybe we can move into an item for the next agenda?
I think it's an excellent idea.
Okay. Thank you. And last but not least, happy Thanksgiving to all. Feliz Dia de Graças a nossa comunidade portuguesa. Thank you. Good night.
Ms. Perella.
Thank you. So a couple of things. I noticed the other night that there was a sign on the, the bank building for sale and I was wondering if, you know, I had brought up in my, several meetings ago, asked the administration if they would look into, seeing if that would be an appropriate setting for a town hall, given its location, given the history of the, of the building, not of the bank, I should say, to Bristol, even though the building is not that old and historic, it's maybe like from the 50s if I recall the article. And, you know, it seems like that would be a good, a good idea. I've heard some people give me feedback that have seen, had seen that, had on, on TV. And I was wondering if you have done that and if not, if we could get a report at the next council meeting.
We did. We made a call to Bank America, but we also counted the parking. There was 20, 20 parking spaces, that's less than we have now, so it wouldn't accommodate our employees. So not really aggressively pursuing it. So unless the council wants to put a motion together, we'll be happy to work on it further. But we do have three, at least three buildings on the common that are available to us, but again, it's lack of parking, so.
I think the thing, if I remember the article that was in the paper, it was just like the, you know, the history of the building. I mean, Bank America is nothing to Bristol or to Rhode Island, but certainly Industrial Trust is and, I shouldn't say, I keep saying the building, but of the bank. And, you know, I think I was, you know, maybe thinking that even, I was disappointed to see it's for sale because, I mean, it would be, I see they, what they would want to do with that, but I mean, to me, it would be like a good donation to us for future use for that reason. And whether or not there's ways to expand either the building or parking or whatever in that particular area. So, you know, I thought that would be like a good option because we talk about moving from this building to, you know, one of the common buildings, which, you know, that seems to be a little bit more in center of the, of the community and to have that historic bank background. I just wanted to remind people that the holiday stroll is coming up this weekend, on the 22nd and the 23rd, so everything's this weekend, actually. There's so many events this weekend, it's unbelievable. So there's no shortage and go out and have a good time in Bristol. It's the, also the Festival of Trees is Saturday night at the Veterans Home, talking about the veterans. That was sponsored by their family association. And last year was the first year that they did that and it was an awesome event. It was just terrific and I would encourage people to go to it. It's, it's less expensive than it was last year to get in and there's just, you know, recognition of, of people who have done a great deal of, I mean, many sacrifices and contributions. There are all kinds of trees decorated that are up for auction and lots of other silent auction app.
Mary, I don't want to ruin this, but I don't want anybody not to go because of this, but they asked me to co- emcee it this year, so I will be. So don't make that a reason not to go, okay?
Yeah, don't let, don't let Nathan turn you off to that. No, it's not free. And also I just want to wish my, my parish, St. Mary's Church, 150th anniversary being celebrated both Saturday night and, yeah, so that's like, it's lots of things going on. And also at a mass on Thanksgiving. So that's been my parish since the time I was born and so I'm very proud to, to see it in such a strong position that it is today. And with that, I just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving as well.
Mary, actually, I agree with you. I've been there for 40, 46 years now, so appreciate that, but it's, it's wonderful to see, you know, a Catholic, a Roman Catholic church celebrate their 150th and by the way, do a very supportive, actually initially of the Italians and the Portuguese, it was used as their foundation. It was used as their foundation for both. So they actually not only serve the Irish immigrants, but also the Portuguese and the Italians, you know?
Right, that's right.
And some folks looking at St. Mary's, you see the Lady Moncombe at the tip. That was in appreciation for the, St. Mary's allowing the Italians to use, they gave the saint to St. Mary's.
We're taking away Aaron's time here. No, but I have to do it. Did you know that Bank of America's original name is Bank of Italy?
Isn't that interesting? There it is.
I'm going to check into that.
You can check into that.
Mr. Leg.
All right. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I'll try to keep this a little bit short. I know that maybe some of my colleagues have been getting these too, but I've been getting the emails about the trash and recycling, the bins. I know that there's been an initial proposal to put forward the 96-gallon trash and recycling bins, and I just wanted to share with my colleagues, we did a report about this a couple of years ago, to try to find the most optimal combination of bins, whether it's a 64-gallon trash bin and a 96-gallon recycle bin, whether it's 96-96, or whether it's a 96-gallon trash and a 64-gallon recycling. So hold on to your socks here, because I'm going to talk about recycling bins for a little while. We looked at West Warwick. West Warwick had the same system that we had. This was a student and I, one of my master's students, we did a whole report on this. They went from whatever we had to a 96-gallon trash and 96-gallon recycling system. They had good results. They, a 14% increase in recycling, a 5% decrease in trash, savings of $17,000. So that's one year savings for $17,000 to what we are going to be going to. For the towns that went, Coventry went from what, kind of what we had, to a 64-gallon trash and then a 96-gallon recycling system. So instead of two recycling, 96-gallon recycling bins, they gave a 64-gallon trash. So there's less capacity to throw your trash, but more capacity to put your recycling. So from a behavioral standpoint, what people are doing is they're, they're starting to learn how to recycle more. Their experience, they increased their recycling by 14.6%, they decreased their trash by 11.2%. That's twice the experience that West Warwick had. They had a savings of $42,000 a year when they went to that system. Or they didn't have a savings, but if Bristol had the same experience as Coventry, if our trash went down 11%, we would have a savings of $42,000, okay? And then if you went to a 64-gallon trash and 64-gallon recycling, increase in recycling, that would increase recycling by 8%, decrease trash by 13.9%. And if we had that same experience in Bristol, if we went to a 64-64, that'd be a savings of $50,000 a year, okay? Take that $50,000, multiply it by 20, that's a million dollars in 20 years. So capacity matters, you know? So whatever choice we make here, I know we put together, put forth our initial proposal, but I'd like to go back and talk to some of the experts at Rhode Island Resource Recovery and kind of hear a little bit more about some of their insights, about if there has been any new development since the two years we put this report out, and maybe we can actually save a little bit of money. So that's all I have for you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Town Administrator, agenda items.
Thank you. I'd just like to welcome our new treasurer, she's here this evening, Raquel Pellerin.
Welcome, yes. Welcome, yes.
Archie gave a hand clap, and we'll definitely give a hand clap now.
And also, I'd like to thank interim Chief Peters, interim chief Captain Brian Burke, and also now Chief Lynch, for their successful efforts to regain our national accreditation. Chief, you have anything you want to say?
I'm extremely proud of the work that the members of the Bristol Police Department did on short order to prepare the police department for national accreditation. I returned on Sunday night from Kentucky, after attending there with Captain Burke, Sergeant Murato, and Officer Brandon Coria. And I can assure you that I've already built a short-term plan to make sure that we continue making certain that the town of Bristol remains a nationally accredited police department. We'll introduce that further when I prepare the budget for fiscal '21, what my long-term, long-range plan will be, to ensure the town that we will maintain this certification. Additionally, at the council meeting, I think it's December 18th, 2019, subject to correction, the executive director of the Rhode Island PAC of Accreditation would like to make a brief presentation to this council, and will be awarding us at that meeting state certification. So we will have both certifications in our front foyer, and for the residents and for the police department on December 18th. So we're extremely proud to have both of those accomplishments, and it's the good work and effort of the men and women of the police department. Just another brief point, if I could take it, next Wednesday, the 27th, I'll be going to Lincoln Town Hall, where all of the police chiefs, you'll see on our social media, will be putting out a campaign, asking people, as everyone's saying, "Happy Thanksgiving." Thanksgiving Eve on Wednesday, in the law enforcement circles, is the deadliest evening on the roadways for drunk driving. So I would ask if your listeners are out there, that they seek a ride home. If somebody is in town and they're unable to locate a taxi, a friend, or a transportation network company, Uber or Lyft, please contact the Bristol Police Department, and we will get them a safe ride home. It's extremely important that everybody return to their families safe for Thanksgiving. So, thank you.
Administrator, if I may, what is the experience, how does that impact our experience, insurance experience, now that we have the full accreditation?
Yeah, the deductible will revert back to the lower amount.
Good.
I think $50,000 down to $1,500 will be the reduction in, once we're nationally--
Could you say that again? That's a really important--
Our deductible will return from $50,000 down to $1,500. And I've already been in contact with the trust and to notify them that we are a nationally accredited agency, and there's a letter that will be in by the end of the week that I'll get over to them on immediate notice.
And Chief, just for clarity on that point, it's, the deductible pertains to an incident with, could you expand upon that? Because it's not our town deductible, it has to do specifically with the police department, right?
Correct. If there was an allegation that the force operated out of the scope of its authority, at that point, if there was any litigation that was against the town, that would be the driver.
Thank you. And there was none, so--
Again, another great point, right?
We made it through, and I think that the department is even stronger now in the, I would also like to thank the rank and file, the members of the department, they're doing a great job. That's all I have. I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to all of you, residents at home and their families. Thank you.
And the motion is to convene into executive session pursuant to 4246-5A5 relative to open space acquisition.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night, everyone. Good night.